Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask Ms. Miller if she is ready to help us with the pledge. Would you like to have your crew there?
I do, I think. All right, tonight we have students from North Elementary who are going to help us with the pledge. I'm going to get up there with them, so hang on. I'm going to tell you who's up here with me and then afterwards they're going to introduce themselves. We have Justice Caldwell, Hayden Slyford, Anthony Encelmo, Madison Lucas, and Brazden Moore. And they are students from North Elementary. So if you would stand for the pledge. So I said these are students from North Elementary. And we spent a little bit of time before the meeting getting to know each other. They told me some really good things about North. And I know that their principal, Ms. Bossy, is here. And there are probably some other teachers here tonight too. So we're glad that you're here. They're going to tell me a little bit about it, tell you a little bit about themselves and some good things that are happening at North.
Hello, I am Justice Caldwell and my favorite subject in North Elementary School is math. My grade nine. My reading level is fourth grade.
What are your stories?
My favorite books I like to read in North are The Magic Treehouse, The Bucks for Our Children, and Goosebumps.
And we talked a little bit about the weather and how we hope that it's not as bad as what they were saying in the meeting. You are going to get to do what tomorrow?
A field trip to, yeah.
Field trip to the opera.
Yeah.
We'll keep our fingers crossed that maybe it will be rescheduled, okay? Anything else you want to tell us? Who can with you tonight?
My grandmother, Sheila Reinhardt.
I am Hayden Slyford and I go to North. I like Jay from ABOB. And it's like a reading program and I like to read. And I was brought by my dad and my mom, Amy Slyford and Travis Slyford.
Wait a minute, Hayden. Hayden did show me, so we were talking about math before the meeting. And I told him that the sevens and the nines multiplication tables have always given me problems. And she gave me a real good hint on how to do that. Can you show that?
Yeah.
Okay, so I will hold mine. So we can say seven times seven, how would you do that?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. And this is the tens, five, six, sixty-three.
That's it. Isn't that wonderful? Every day you learn something new. You really do. That's great. Anything else you want to tell us about?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Anthony Encelmo. My favorite subject is reading. I like the Magic Treehouse series. My mom and dad brought me.
Anything else you want to tell us? In second grade, so maybe you're not wearing any of those stuff. Are you in science kids or anything? Nothing? Okay.
Hello, my name is Madison Lucas. My favorite subject in North is art and music. And I like, um...
Tell me why you like art and music. Tell me why you like it. It's a real thing. It's a... You don't want it? Okay.
Um, I hope it's my just because I really want to play with my best friend on full waves and slides.
Who can with you tonight?
My grandma and my mom, Kristen Lucas and Kristy Vaughn.
Hi, my name is Brazden Moore. And I like that kindergarten.
What was your favorite center in kindergarten?
Books.
Books. And so you're already reading books in kindergarten? Pretty amazing, isn't it? Do you do anything with technology? With computers or anything? Do you have a spark board that you'd get to go up to and touch and do things with? Do you like to do that? Hang with you tonight? My mom, your mom hang with you? Okay. Anything else about North? They did tell me that it was a very good school. And that they liked every president this year. So they were very happy. We appreciate you coming. And we have this one. Have a little certificate for you, okay? And we're glad that you think that this is the pledge tonight.
Mr. Chairman, you have just an outstanding group of seniors with tonight.
We do, Mr. Chairman. I was pleased to meet with seniors from our high schools prior to the evening this evening. And one of them has a back for repeat performance actually was before the board last time as part of the Van Mary thing in Crest High School. She's back tonight. But we talked about lots of different things, everything from student services and smart lunch to parking and shared a lot of things about schools and shared some good information. I'm going to stand up and introduce myself to the board, write my thoughts to you. And we'll just walk down and listen, okay?
My name is Ryan Lancaster. I represent Crest High School tonight. I attended Bull Springs Elementary. And my parents are TM and Lori Lancaster. At Crest, I'm a member of the FFA, National Technical Honor Society, National Honor Society and Beta Club. I go to Bull Springs Baptist Church where I own Leadership Committee. I work at Bullhorn Hospital. And I love to fish and be outdoors. My plan is after graduating Crest is I hope to attend North Carolina State University and major in Biological Engineering in hopes of one day becoming an Agricultural Engineer.
Chairman Hammer, and board members, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Ashlyn and I represent Crest High School. I went to actually three different elementary schools, one in Illinois, one in Wisconsin, and Bull Springs for fifth grade. My parents are Beth and Scott Lynn. I am president of EFA and I'm part of Beta Club, National Honor Society, National Technical Honor Society. I go to church at Pleasant Bridge and I work at Bullhorn Hospital. I show goes at Bray Cricket, so it's part of kind of my free time playing. I want to attend the North Carolina State University to become a veteran or a graduate.
My name is Haley Hammer. I'm a senior at the Early College High School. My parents are David and Trina Hammer. At school, I'm currently involved in my graduation project which is for fundraising money for the Carrie Under Foundation which helps kids with cancer. And I also work at Angles on the Seventy-four. I language in college at Gardner-Bentham University and I went to major in psychology. My career goal, I want to be a psychiatrist.
Good evening, my name is Janice Snack. And I'm a senior at Kings Mountain High School. My parents are Chan and Kay Snack. I'm involved in several activities at school, including being the president of Math Club, the president of Students Against Drive Driving, the secretary of Students Participation Organization, and then a member of Beta Club and National Honor Society. I also volunteer at our local Williams Club, Seasonal League. And I work at Lucas and Mar and Gastonio. I plan to attend NC State and study environmental engineering to become an environmental engineer.
Evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Vincent Lewis and I'm a senior at Kings Mountain High School. My parents are Genon Lewis and Vincent Lewis. And I'm in the band, I'm a section leader of the band, I play trumpet. I was a track manager and still am. I'm in the county jazz band, Dr. Bruce Boles are there. I was a part of the Smart Lunch Committee to incorporate that into Kings Mountain High School. I plan to go to Chapel Hill University and study Biology, but I'm not sure what job I'd like to do next year.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Abby Bradshaw. I'm a senior at Burns High School. My parents are Jean and Carla Bradshaw. And I'm involved in several activities like Flag Zell for the President. And I'm a junior civitan. And I'm band captain in the marching band, play clarinet. And I'm also a constable and OVO solist, two-time OVO solist. I plan to attend college at Western Carolina University and study Communication Science and Disorder. And my career goal is to be a speech therapist who specializes in geriatrics. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Lauren Myers. I'm a senior at Burns High School. My parents are Steven and Pamela Myers. At my school, I participate in the Future Teachers of America where I'm president. I'm also in the marching band where I'm captain. I'm also a project unit vice student leader and a tutor at Burns Middle School. I plan to attend NC State University and major in Secondary Science Education. And my career goal is to become a biology teacher. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Sharon Ready and I represent Shelby High School. My parents are Ann and Rylan Ready. I'm involved in several activities at my school, including a ball conference called Crunchy Runner, a member of the soccer team, student body vice president. I'm really involved in young life. And I'm the vice president of Teenage Republicans. I plan to attend App State in the fall and study Exercise Science to become an occupational therapist. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Melissa Miller. And I'm a resident at Shelby High School. My parents are Christopher and Xavier Miller. And I'm a part of the sports medicine, part of sports medicine at my high school. I'm the head track trainer. And I also train football. I'm the vice president of the Spanish National Honor Society and already got into that mess. And I'm also a volunteer in the girls' club. And I plan to attend the University of Chapel Hill, University of North Carolina Chapel Hill and study Health Sciences and Spanish. And I want to come here.
Chair looks like NC State recruiters have asked my name.
Excuse me, pledge later, you can go sit with your parents. Parents are welcome to stay for the rest of the morning, but if you need to get to home, you're welcome to leave now. Thank you.
Now it's time to recognize any other guests we might have here. Other principals here.
Thank you for giving the opportunity.
Do you see any representatives? Any other elected officials? I would have all of you here. Now it's time for public participation. We have two speakers tonight. The first one is... Mr. Williams, Robert Williams, sorry. Good evening. The call place in your package, what I want to speak about is a agreement written through our reservation by your attorney, your attorney, your law. Attorney. And I have a suggestion that, that, that the local Cleveland County School System should do a local attorney for another minutes. I saw in court, the agreement was that your law attorney would be on call at, at the chairman's request to have a phone call during the meeting. Now, I don't see any telephones in this room. So apparently what you would do is go into a closed session and talk to your attorney about whatever it is you're talking about. Well, some of the things that you would need legal advice in is not things that you would go to a closed session for, that you would need an open session. So it appears to me like every time you go talk to your attorney about something that should be discussed in open meetings, you're in violation of the law. And I believe, I believe that in the end it's going to cause problems. So my suggestion is to think about maybe changing your legal arrangements such that you would hire a local attorney. And maybe, I know the county commissioners, the county attorney sits in on every meeting and for the retainer that you're paying. It may be that you could get a local attorney to sit in on open meetings and advise you. I know things like going into closed session specifically spell out how you do that in the law. And I think sometimes it's difficult to follow that to the T as the law requires. So I'm just recommending that, that, that the school would consider hiring a local attorney. And so I had said that there. Thank you for your suggestion. Next is Robert Queen.
Mr. Chairman, board members, and Dr. Boles. As you already know, I submitted a list of questions and documentation to the board on January thirteenth. The purpose of my questions was to separate fact recognition regarding many members and allegations circulating throughout the county regarding the board and CCS administration. I received a letter from Dr. Boles last Friday regarding my request. Dr. Boles indicated that responding to each of my questions would entail substantial staff time and that many of my questions seek information that the board is not obligated to provide. According to the letter, the board was not responding to my questions because I did not ask for specific public records. Response letter went over several sections of public documents. No attempts were made to answer my questions correctly. Most of the questions were completely ignored. I had searched through the documents to find some of the answers on the home. There's no problem, I can do my own research. I do find it interesting that some of the documents provided bring even more embarrassment to the school system. The first question I asked was about how many cell phones are provided by CCS, bus drivers, employees, and how much the monthly cellphone expense is. I was provided a list of cell phones and there's 328 in case anyone's wondering, and a copy of two Verizon wireless invoices. Both of the Verizon wireless bills are past due. Why can't the school system pay its bills on time? It's an embarrassment to the school system and taxpayers of Cleveland County. As best I can tell, Cleveland County schools are spending an average of $8,200 per month, or almost $99,000 a year on cell phones. During North Carolina candidate forums last fall, the incumbents told the attendees to let the board know if there were any issues that needed to be addressed. We were told the board could not do anything about a problem that they didn't know about. You don't allow time for open questions during board meetings and individual board members can't handle on their own. So I submitted my request in writing. Apparently you guys have misunderstood my request. Although I asked for some public records, the primary purpose of my questions was applying. I wanted to know the reasoning behind certain actions and expenditures that were taken by the board and CCS personnel. I don't know who came up with the response approach that was sent to me, one friend that came across as arrogant and insulting. This is not my first board meeting. I've only missed one in the last six months since August. Seems to me like that should earn enough respect to get a few questions answered whether they're public record requests or not. I'm here again tonight asking if the board would like more time to respond to my questions or should I consider Dr. Boles' letter your final answer? Seems like you guys would like to get this out in the open so we can all move forward. So that is an open question. Should I expect more information coming or is that it?
I don't know. Our response is to thank you. We have participated and taken into consideration your comments. Go forward.
Okay. I would like to have all the information that I've supplied in your response entered into the meeting minutes.
Thank you. On next to this time, the adoption of our agenda for the night. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to approve the agenda.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda, which we all have in our package. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously on to consideration of the minutes of the January business closed session. Do you all have time to give a little hand? What's the pleasure of the board? It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the January twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen business closed session. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Next is the approval of minutes of the January twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen closed personnel session. What's the pleasure of the board? It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the January twenty-seventh, excuse me, two thousand fourteen closed session, personnel session. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you all. On to the globally competitive students of Cleveland County Promise is here to tell us about their program. And I'm not exactly sure, screen, are you going to print that or? Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Remember the school board, Dr. Boles, for his opportunity to give us an opportunity to talk about Cleveland County Promise and to give you an update on what we are. And I ask him, first of all, I want to recognize our new executive director, Ms. Chair is calling. She just came on board this week. Also, in the crowd is, in the audience rather, is two of my board members, Brian Bragg and Mr. Willery McIntosh. Other members who could not attend, board members who could not attend was Jeff Ledford and Reverend Dante Murphy. Again, I wanted to thank you for this opportunity to talk to you about the Cleveland County Promise and just to be brief. A lot of you already know about the promise, so I'll kind of be brief about the specifics of it, to kind of give you an update on some things that have happened over the last six months or so. Again, our vision is, in part of the Cleveland County Promise, is to make sure that we are in a position where we can provide every student who graduates from a Cleveland County school, whether that's public, private, charter, homeschool, tuition. We base our tuition off the most expensive university, public university, which is University of North Carolina Chapel Hill. Their current tuition right now is eighty-three, I believe eighty-three forty. It's already, it's kind of sad that since we started this program back in two thousand eleven, when I first started doing research, the board and I, North Carolina Chapel Hill was at seventy-three eleven tuition. Now it's gone up to almost eighty-three hundred dollars. Just a quick glance at the promise programs that have been implemented prior to the Cleveland County Promise. The Cowasun Promise was first. It's been very successful. The Pittsburgh Promise is successful as well. And as you can see, the University of Pittsburgh Medical Center believes in it so much that they placed a hundred million dollars, so they're doing matching grants up to a hundred million dollars. The El Dorado Promise is very promising. Not too long ago, about a month or two ago, we had the executive director from the El Dorado Promise, Sylvia Thompson, to come down and give us a report and to show the success of the El Dorado Promise. And I'll share a little bit about it. But one of the things that, two things that was very interesting in addition to the progress and the way the schools have been, the test scores have gone up. They have built, as a result of the promise program, they built a new high school. And that high school is seven acres under heated space. That's not the parking lot, that's not the football field, that's not the soccer field. That's all high school as a result of that, that, the promise program. Because they've had thirty-three, they've had families from thirty-three different states and thirteen foreign countries relocating to El Dorado from this promise program. It's been very successful. The archipelago of the promise program is really where I adopted this when I was coaching back in two thousand eleven at Washington Baptist University. And was really introduced to the promise program at that time. I want to share something with you. Just last week ago today, the governor of Tennessee in his state of the state address mentioned that the state of Tennessee is going to pass legislation to introduce the Tennessee Promise. And that is going to start in two thousand fifteen. They are projecting, according to the report, and here is their website, they're projecting twenty-five thousand students will apply. And their stipulations are somewhat different, but any student who graduates from a school in Tennessee, who is to attend a community college or to pursue their associate's degree, they will be fully funded. So this thing is catching on. There's a trend going on. People are seeing now that there's a need for this type of promise program since we're starting to see a little, a lot of decline in student loans and payroll rates. Just wanted to show you dropout rate, just in comparison. If you look at El Dorado back when they started this promise program in two thousand and six, that dropout rate was at eight percent. Since the, since the promise program, their dropout rate is at one point seven percent. And you can see by comparison, the state of North Carolina is in the red bar and Cleveland County is in the red and gold bar and see where we are. So even though we're on a decline, we're not quite where this promise program is and we would like to get there. Just a couple of things that I was telling you about, about the hindrance or the difficulties is for families to get student loans and payroll grants. We all see, according to the data statistics, student loan debt when these young men and women graduate from high school or graduate from college, they'll probably project to be a little bit over thirty-five thousand dollars in student loan debt. That's sad that, you know, students are leaving school with that type of debt. What's even worse is the government, the United States government is cracking out on plus loans. Plus loans is a loan where the parent will be able to use their credit scores and their credit history and their finances to help receive those loans for their students. The government has passed a policy now that it makes it very difficult to get student, parent plus loans. parent plus loans. They take it into consideration, if you're ninety days delinquent, bankruptcies, you know, garnish wages, so forth and so on, we all know, we just run through a tough economy. And so as a result of it, it's affecting a lot of schools, mainly the HBCU schools, which are the historical black colleges and universities, and according to their numbers, they have lost over twenty-five thousand, twenty-two thousand students in one year, because in fact, their kids couldn't, the parents couldn't get student loans to send them to college. So these are reasons why these promise programs are much needed. Just quickly here, I want to focus on, this is the demographics of Cleveland County when we started doing this, and I want to focus on the last, forty-two percent of our Cleveland County students do not qualify for a payroll grant or a North Carolina lottery, because of their family household income is fifty thousand dollars and higher. Now even though that's even, that's a sad number, what's even more devastating, according to the secretary of assistant, the second, the state of education assistant, deputy director, payroll grants and lottery grants have gone down in awards. I know typically it's around fifty-five hundred dollars for a payroll grant, and about thirty-five hundred max for student loan, I mean, I'm sorry, lottery scholarship. Now according to Mr. Cock, who's the deputy director, combined, if you go to a North Carolina public university, combined, the maximum amount you can get in an award is thirty-seven ninety-five. Now, if you go to a community college, it seems like you're awarded a little bit more, which I have no disagreements with, but you qualify for forty-four hundred and forty-five dollars. So you're starting to see a decline also, but you see that number, that forty-two percent, that's a very devastating number to the parents and hardworking people here in Cleveland County, who work, they made just enough money not to qualify for any type of government assistance, but they don't make enough to be able to send their kids off to college. We should, the criteria for sending our kids to college should not be whether or not they can afford it, it should be whether or not they qualify to get into schools. I'll pass through the eligibility of it, I think everybody kind of knows the eligibility of it, and as you can see, like I said, I highlighted the number, two thousand and eleven, UNC Chapel Hill was seventy-three eleven, I believe it is, now it's eighty-three forty, so that's less than two years. Here are some of the requirements as well. One of the things that our, that our promise program have that other programs do not have, in fact, the El Dorado Promise is going to adopt our program, we make it mandatory for every student, until they graduate, receive this promise program, they have to take the money, money skills, money online program. We're providing that free to the students, we're providing it free to the family members, anyone in Cleveland County who wants to participate in this, it's online, they can do it on their own pace, and it's worked as a module. In addition to that, El Dorado, the Archipelago Promise has a requirement of attendance. We'll start off here, the first year, once we're funded, the students must attend eighty-five percent of ninth grade to high school, and then we'll kind of graduate that up to about ninety percent requirement on attendance. In addition to all the other requirements, you know, we don't pay for summer school, what we want to do is encourage the students to come back and give back to the community by volunteering at a local nonprofit organization. We're trying to teach them to be responsible, but also networking and build resumes, so when they do graduate from college, and if all things are even between them and another student getting a job, we all know that companies always look at, what is your community involvement? What are you doing in the communities that you serve? So hopefully, this will be a plus for them. Talk about support center, we will have career financial advisors at each school, to help the kids with resumes, to help them with scholarships, help them with the applications, help them with pretty much anything that needs setup visits for school, kind of help the counselors, and add, just give a little extra to the counselors who are working so hard to make sure that these students are going off to college. These are the resources, the evaluations, one of the things that the career financial advisors will do that will be a benefit to the school board and the Chamber of Commerce and everybody around, we will be able to track data. Right now, we have no idea when our kids leave Cleveland County, we do not really know where they go. So one of the things that we want to do is continue to track the students, know where they are, so that way, if we have a kid, a family from Cleveland County that's out in California, we have a kid who want to go to UCLA, and we have a family out there, hopefully we can reach out to that family and say, hey, can you be of interest to this student? Or if we have businesses who have contributed to this, to say, hey, can you help out and maybe give this kid a student internship? So we will be, this will be a valuable resource to us moving forward. That's pretty much it on the promise program. I just want to add one, a couple of things, since over the last couple of years I've been doing this and working around my position, I served as vice president of government relations and external affairs for a company in Greenville, South Carolina. My primary job is doing legislation across the country. And so when I talk to people about what we're doing in Cleveland County, they're excited. And I've had a number of counties, and a number of people here in North Carolina, as well as in other states, have asked me to come and give presentations, and help them to create this program. What I've said to them is, I'm not creating the program until I get my program running up in Cleveland County, then we'll work with you. So that's, that's, I had to know that people are excited about this, and you can see by the state of Tennessee, with the governor using this as his address. What we're asking now for the school board, one of the things that we want to do, this is up here, you have in your package, overview of what we would like to do to kind of kick our fundraising efforts off, we want to do a program called the Links of Learning, and the goal is to break the Guinness World Record for the largest paper chain link by team, and we want to get the community involved, we want to get the school system involved, we want to get the kids involved. And our goal is to make, the current record is fifty-four point thirty-three miles. We want to create fifty-five miles of chain link, and call them the Links of Learning, LOL, sort of the language that the kids speak, and we want to, we want to raise a total of five point five million dollars to get this started. Fifty-five miles, hundred thousand dollars per mile. Each chain link will be ten inches in diameter, each inch is a dollar, so you can buy a full chain link for ten dollars. So we have come up with this concept and this idea, and what we're simply asking the school here today is to simply give us permission to go talk to the counselors, go talk to the principals in the school, get them excited, get their input, and then maybe at your next board meeting, we will have a full proposal as we, as we move forward.
Because we like the students to be involved in the partnering with their communities, if anything, just getting information out to their parents, churches, any kind of organizations that they're in, but also any kind of grassroots funding on this, as we're starting out, is also the goal, or by the fact that if you guys are interested, if the community shows interest, we can do matching donations from grants and from trusts, and we can take this grassroots and excitement, and take it to, you know, some big money and say, well, this is how excited we are, we want you to buy into the program too.
So, thank you. And she could have put it in better than I could, and one of the things, we have got to commit, some commitments from outside, with my job and the people that I network with on a regular basis, their mindset is, look, if we see the community excited about it, if we see they have some input, and I've shared a number, these were Dr. Boles and a couple of members on here, we've got people from outside the county, outside the state, who's wanting, who want to help and jump in, but they need to see that the community is excited about it, the community is involved in it. So I think with our relationship with the national media, as a result of the Sheldon Star Paper article that ran Super Bowl weekend about me holding the Super Bowl trophy, I got a call from WCCB in Charlotte, and they ran an article, I mean, they ran a story two days later. So if people are starting to see it, and people are excited about it, we just need to get the local community excited, and educate them. In addition to the promise program, just to throw it out, we would like to, at some point in time, have four community town hall meetings, in Upper Cleveland, and Crest District, and Sheldon District, and in Kings Mountain District, where we invite the public out, and educate them on it, give them an opportunity to ask questions, and get involved.
But does it literally affect every single student? Not, it doesn't, every single student can take advantage of this, to graduate from high school and go to college? And it's ridiculous, the idea that you're entering a workforce in the adult world with thirty thousand dollars of debt, of student debt, that will follow the trust, almost the rest of their life, it seems like. And this, this can, this can take that away, this can give them a start that's miles ahead of other communities. Not only that, but it can also maybe even stop some of the brain drain of people leaving Cleveland County, bringing them in, bringing them into industry, because how workable would it be to tell a business, yeah, we want you here, all of your employees to go over and kiss them for college? Who can say that? So it can literally affect every single student in Cleveland County, and I acknowledge that there's another program even promoted.
Sad, I have presentations in Cleveland, so it was a bit, we'll get out. Any questions? It certainly isn't admirable, the goal that you have there, and I think, for support you a hundred percent, mechanics, though, will have to be worked out, because I think really that's not perfect, the whole work of sales.
If all of us were allowed in the school, to be able to talk to principals, just to know what their, what their idea of our, our goal could be, make sure that they learn mine, what the trend is.
Well, also to be, the obligation the principal has, carrying out teaching for students, there is a finite number of hours, so I'm still thinking, that's the whole reg, so that's, that you all have further talks with Dr. Boyle. Any questions or comments?
I'm just curious, how, how is your fundraising going so far?
Well, we, we have some initial funding to get started, we are, we're in the process of fundraising, we wanted to, one of the things that we want, we want to take this very slow and dot all i's and cross all t's. We did not, we wanted to start off with a work of needs and learning funders, so given the Guinness World Record, you have to first submit specific about what you're trying to break, and then it takes them weeks to come back and give you, give you a thumbs up on that. I waited until we got a thumbs up on that before I went to Dr. Boyle's and asked. Throughout this entire process, I have never, we have never been proactive or advanced without knowing exactly what we're going to do. We have not asked anyone for any money, we went to my company and said, hey, we need some funding for, for our staff, and for office space, and so forth and so on, and that, we have got that funding, so we're set from the standpoint of administrative costs, and starting to implement.
But all of us are interested. Now, don't recall, are you a father of a little kid?
We are, that was, that was another thing, we wanted to wait until we got our five oh one C P status. I can tell you something that's amazing, and given what happened back, the question about all the questions, whether or not nonprofit status were being picked out or not, we applied in late November of two thousand and twelve, and we were told it would take about eighteen months before we get something back. We got a letter saying that, hey, we're in receipt of your application, around a month later, and in March of two thousand and thirteen, we got our nonprofit status. So, you know, they did not come back and ask for any, ask for any additional information we had, all our i's and all our t's were also.
I think it's, Mr. Chairman, I think it's a very impressive thing that you've done so far. I think you've already done a lot of labor with Dr. Boyle, and I'm interested to see if that's going to take shape. I like to, you know, like you said, get all p's, i's, and all this stuff, especially like the LOL name, Links of Learning, I mean, you know, being in that generation, I think it's going to be catchy, and I think it is, a very, it's a lofty goal, but I think when they get into El Dorado and across the country, it's very lofty, who better than Cleveland County, why not? So I love you guys.
I want to take credit for El Dorado, believe it or not, it was a Shelby High student who came up, and so, you know, the students that we, and I'm, you know, the kids who were friends, so, not for all kids, kind of news for all that, but, you know.
I'm impressed.
So, you know, kids are already having some influence of this.
Thank you very much.
Pleasure, Jim.
On to Twenty-First Century, professionals, personnel, of course, at that before you. The package, what's the pleasure of the board?
I'm making a motion to clear for you other representatives, superintendent.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, personnel, of course, prepared, prepared by superintendent to, our package, approved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. On to, very detailed discussion, I anticipate, of the legislative tenure reduction plan this law.
Okay. In the November work session Diane Bridges had, giving you an initial update and an overview, and I'm going to do a little review with you, and then update you on where we are and where we're going. Okay. Senate before two phases and significant changes, which you know, I'm giving you the full, the full bill so you can read it in your free time, but we're going to focus on section nine point six tonight, especially section half. The most sweeping change in this bill is that teachers will no longer be awarded career status, that's already taken place, that happened at the beginning of the school year, and the elimination of career status for all teachers who have already earned tenure, and that will take effect at the end of the seventeen eighteen school year, July two thousand and eighteen, which will of course require us to make some policy changes that we will do as we go. This is what the law says in regards to the part we're going to talk about tonight, which is the selection of the twenty-five percent. The superintendent will review the performance and evaluations of all teachers who have employed with the local board for three consecutive years, and then based on that review, he will identify twenty-five percent eligible teachers to be offered a four-year contract and added salary in exchange for the relinquishment of their career status or any claim on their career status. And we are in the process of getting to that recommended twenty-five percent. There are basically three phases in this law, we're going to focus on phase one tonight, but I thought it's kind of good just to have an overview of what the whole thing looks like. In phase one, that's this year, two parts, one is that tenure can no longer be awarded, like I said, that's already happened, and then second, the superintendent will recommend twenty-five percent for a four-year contract, and that's what we won't spend our time talking all time. Phase two is what happens in that intermediate before everybody loses tenure, and there will be people that are on a four-year contract that we offer to, those will be continuing career status, and then one-year contracts, and then after two thousand and eighteen, everybody will be on a contract and no more tenure. This slide is just a graphic of that phase one, this is the one, this is where we are now. You can see the August two thousand and thirteen career status is longer, and then we're in that September to May section, where local decisions, planning, review of teacher performance evaluation, and preparation for issuing contracts, and you can see the other things there, at the end of the year, there's the deadline for accepting the contract, and then, like I said, that's, this is really phase one. Here's phase two, this is what it will look like at the end of this year, we will have teachers, some that will be on a four-year contract, those are the ones that will, will offer it up to twenty-five percent, and then whoever accepts it will be on that four-year, we'll have some who will continue in career status, that will be the people who either did accept the contract, who already have career status or were not offered it, and then everybody else will be on a one-year contract. And then two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, this is that phase three, no more career status for anyone, everybody will be on a contract to be their one year, two years, or four years, and then the salary implication that we don't know, kind of just so you know, the general assembly is saying that their move is to pay based on performance, again, we don't know what that's going to look like, but at least you can kind of know that's to come. Okay. Now, what we're really going to talk about tonight, which is selecting that twenty-five percent, we have already kind of hit this already, but basically, there are two things that we have to do. The first thing is to determine eligibility, and the way we do that is to look at those teachers that have three years, and who have been proficient, and then select twenty-five percent of that group. Who can get a four-year contract? They have to, these four things have to be, have to occur. First, they have to have been three consecutive years in our district. Second, they have to have been proficient on the teacher evaluation instrument. And third, they're recommended by the superintendent, and by- And third, they're recommended by the superintendent and by you based on performance and evaluations, and then they have to accept the contract by June 30th, 2014. Those teachers will receive a four-year contract that will start the 2015, 14, 15 school year, and they will receive a $500 annual pay raise for the four-year contract. And as a result of getting the pay raise, they relinquish their career status. Basically, their salary gives up $500 each year. Okay, who is eligible? What do we mean by teacher? According to the definition from the Attorney General, it would be classroom teachers, which you'd expect, but also guidance counselors, school psychologists, social workers, speech and language, CTE, media coordinators, and then the other professionals, and that's like our coaches, our CTCs, things like that. That's our group of teachers. And then, of course, there's a requirement of the three consecutive years, and we are looking at the years 2010, 11, 2011, 12, and 2012, 13. So those are the three years that they had to have been a teacher. One of the questions I've gotten a lot about is, you know, what if there's a teacher who was in, who had tenure in another county, and they came to us, and were here all last year, and now they have tenure in our county, but they were only with us last year, but they have tenure. Can they be considered? No, they cannot, because they've not done three consecutive years, even though they have tenure. And then what do we mean by proficiency on the valuation instrument? That means that on each of the standards, they have an overall rating of proficient, and on the teacher evaluation model, there are six standards, and we're talking about only standards one through five, because they are the ones that have a rating of proficient. Standard six is the one that will be based on student performance, and it will be either he made it or he did not, it doesn't have proficiency, so that standard is not being One of the things that makes it problematic is that if we do just look at the evaluation data, you can see I've been working on it in the counties, if we just look at that, it's going to be difficult to decide who's the 25%. If we only looked at distinguished, we wouldn't have a number, we would only have 4% of our teachers in that distinguished group. If we look at accomplished, we add 39%, so now we have 43% of our teachers that are accomplishing above, so we have more. So you can see, we're going to have to look at more than just the evaluation. So what is our process and what is our planning? First, we determined who was eligible, and that was an interesting process. At this time, we determined 937 teachers are in that eligible, which again means that they have been in Cleveland County for three years as a teacher, three consecutive years, and that they have been at least rated proficient in every standard. The next thing that we have done is we have softie, we have a teacher advisory group that has a teacher on it from every school in the county, as well as the NCAA, and we have asked their feedback about different things, and as we go through, we talk about some of the things we're considering, I'll kind of tell you some of the feedback that they've given us. The PANG is the professional administrator's report, you know, that's like the group of HR directors from the county, and I have them, and me with our regional board, and that's a hot topic, is what we're doing in this one. So I kind of, you know, we've had to talk about what are different, other districts looking at, and what are they considering? And then Jonathan Blumberg is, of course, our attorney, and so we've been looking, is this legal, is this something we consider? The law's varied, and, you know, says that we're to look at performance and evaluation, so some of the things we've looked at, you know, one example is teachers thought it would be good to look at attendance. Legally, that doesn't really have to do with performance and things like that, so there have been some things that we've considered, but then some things that would make it legally maybe not, maybe wouldn't hold it up when it came to what the law's intent was. So we, there's just some things that we talked to lawyer about. We have divided our teachers into two pools based on evaluation. We have a new evaluation tool, which most, our classroom teachers are all on, our counselors are on, and then our CTCs, some of those people are also on. And it has five ratings, and I actually gave you a copy of that rubric to look at, but you can see it's, has five different ratings. That's 90% of our, that eligible pool, that's 90%. The majority of our people are on this new evaluation model. Now, psychologists, social workers, they are still on what we call the old evaluation, and it only has four ratings. So we felt like it was unfair to put them all on the same, when their evaluation looks different, if we were going to get points for different rates, it's different, and I know for former principals, anybody that's looked at it, that the distinguished on the new model compared to the S standard or the above standard on the, they do not, they are not the same, it is a different type of model, one's a growth model, one's not. So we really need those to be separate pools. And then we've looked next at how, you know, what method will we use for getting that 25%? Like I said, we can't just look at, if they made it distinguished, because it's too little people, we can't just look at accomplished, because that makes us over that 25%. So we've considered a rubric, and we've looked at the contracts. The rubric. Some of the things we've considered, the first thing is the evaluation data, and we've looked at the year, the last year, which was 12, 13, and we've taken an average of the standards. Teachers who were on their renewal year, or probationary had all of the standards, so they had five, or teachers who were not on a renewal year, only had a rating in standard one and four. So whatever they had, whether it was rating on all or on two, we took an average of it, and then we've assigned some points based on where they were. Some other things that we've considered using would be national award certification, EVO, succeeding, growth, service, license, master's degree, high needs area, active mentor, these are things, not that we would not, we have, I wouldn't say on all of these that we're definitely going to use on, but there are ones we've considered. We've considered all of it because we can find a link, we've considered all of the costs we can note. You know, some of the things, of course, that we know teachers do, like collaborate, which is so important, how do you measure that? And how do you know, how does that look in different places? So we were, these are things that we can know, we can know that some of them. Basically, we have, we've looked at two methods. The first one would be to, if you have your eligible teachers, and you give them their points for evaluation, you give them the points for national award, and then you look at who's our top 25%. The second method would be to say, we're going to look at the evaluation data, and we'll take everybody who has, you know, an accomplished average and above, and then of that group, we apply the rubric. So what we're, you know, when we've done that, we looked at tier one, is you have to have this on your evaluation, and now we're going to look at some things to pull on 25% from that group. Another thing that we've considered is the contract consideration form, and that was, I also maybe knew that. This is one that our attorney drafted, and lots of other counties are doing similar things to this, the consideration form or an application. When we showed this to the teacher group, they loved it, they were, they really liked us. The contract has a few parts. The first part is eligibility determination. I personally really like this section, because, you know, we've been going through and looking for that three years, and, you know, that they've had proficient, but this would give us a chance that every teacher, regardless that they've only been with us one year, would fill this form out, and if they checked that they were eligible, and if they are not on our list, we would go back and make sure we didn't miss anybody. So I really like the idea of this part, because it would give us a double check to make sure that we haven't looked anybody out that should be considered. The second part is the teachers would, you know, would say, I wish to be considered, but I understand that just saying I want to be considered doesn't mean I'm saying I'll accept it, but at least I want you to know I'm interested in being considered. And then a section for people who would say, I do not want to be considered, I'm not interested in the contract. And then if we were to use the contract, it would allow us to look at, to giving the contract to people who are interested, which would narrow our list of people also. And then for those who have some time breakers, and I believe that we probably will, we can look at reader leadership rubric. And on this, these are things that we wouldn't be able to measure, like being on the sit team, or being a committee chair, being a mentor, cooperating teacher, club sponsor, things that we know that teachers do, that like presenting professional development at different levels, that we know that teachers do, but we really need some data from schools for that. If they were interested in accepting it, they would fill that out, they would sign up the principal with, I'd say, yes, they were, they did these things, and that would give us some, some time breakers. Some pros and cons to looking at that, and the good thing, I said, teachers were really interested in the contract, and maybe we were at least considering giving it to that 25% to people that were interested. I think one of the cons is if all of your really good people aren't interested in the contract, then you could end up offering it to maybe not your top 25%.
So that it can be targeted?
If you, if you were to do the contract consideration, and the people who were in your top said they're not interested, you still have to offer it to 25%, and if you decided to offer to the people that are interested, you could actually be offering it to not your top. So you have to, you know, that's one of the things you have to consider. It can become, or something that's a lot of paper that will be floating around, and that we'll be dealing with, but again, I think it could, the teachers, you know, it's a positive thing, it seems to, just across other districts around, seems to be making this whole process not so, for teachers, maybe not so great. Some other things that we're considering, or to consider, one, again, complying with the law, and it being based on teachers' evaluations of performance. Of course, the board has broader authority. When you look at the list you still have, there's still two things that you have as a parameter, which is they have to have the three years, and they have to have been proficient. And then, of course, you're trying to preserve the principal-teacher relationship, we don't want this to become the favorite people, you know, the group, you know, whatever, receive the contract. We're looking for a fair and defensible method, something that we can say. One of the things that has come up about the contract consideration form we met with teachers is, you know, well, some schools, this admitting is more important, and in some schools, this is more important, and, you know, on here, and what about, should we have an open-ended section? You know, I think when we've looked at it, we felt like it did need to be standard across the district. However, I think one of the things that, and it's, it'll, it's on the next slide too, that Dr. Bowles is in favor of, and I agree, is that, you know, we may offer 25% by school, so that, you know, there's, there comes to be a lot of conversation about the rubric. And one of the reasons I gave it to you is you can look and see, I mean, it's a difficult rubric, what we're asking them to do, and there's a lot of, a lot of room for people to read it differently and to think differently, you know, about, there's sometimes, you know, teachers, well, my principal, you know, they rate harder on this, your principal rates easier, so when you're comparing schools, but if we did 25% at each school, y'all have the same rate, or y'all have the same opportunities to be on the committee, or to be on the sit team, or to be on whatever, so we have maybe a little more fairness if we looked at the whole class school. Assuring that the selected method is administratively feasible to implement, and there are ways to minimize the negative impact and to be teacher-friendly. I think, you know, again, I go back to, I think that our district has done such good work, and it showed up in the Saks visit with collaboration and professional learning communities, and we want people to continue to share things, and we're saying, I'm, you know, part of, you know, 25% of you is going to, is going to get this extra money in the contract. You can see how that can hurt collaboration in those things, and we're doing, you know, we want to minimize that. I think that's part of the, you know, who's interested in the contract, would help deal with some of that. Some other questions we're considering is should we institute an application, that would be the contract consideration form that we're considering, and then would we select them district-wide or school by school? I think we're leaning towards school by school. We've looked at some district, and we've done some things just to see like how it fell on its own, we haven't looked at specific teachers, but if we did the contract, I think we would, that would give us that information. Should we use a criteria that solely relies on evaluation? I think that would be great if we could, but we just, that, that doesn't exist, we, you know, we can, again, get it to maybe 40%. And then, if not, what other criteria would we use, or would we just break ties? Should we consider other leadership roles, and if so, what should we consider? And that's kind of what we've done on the consideration form. And then what will we do with non-classroom teachers? And I think in that one's where we're doing them kind of separately. Next steps. Right now, we are, our plan is to put out the contract consideration forms to teachers in the next week, and then have like a two-week turnaround, and then we'll be also doing the intent forms for the district, whether or not, that will, because if somebody's retiring next year, obviously, we would not be standing up for your contract to them, so that would reduce, that can reduce some of our number. And then we'll update you on our progress. March, April, maybe May, Dr. Bowles will recommend a list to you. This comes straight from law, that if the list is recommended in closed session, you revise the list in closed session, and then the list is approved in open session. And then in May, some of it, one of those places, we would select the teachers to receive the contracts, and then they have to return it by June 30th. Questions?
You mentioned that $500 per year, my understanding that was supposed to be 500, even go up to 5,000 in total after four years, instead of 500 per year.
It's 500 per year, it doesn't go up to 5,000, but when you, the first year they get, they have a $500 raise, and the next year, when you add 500, that would make that year, their salary would be 1,000 more. The next year, they would get another 500, which would then be 1,500, and the next year, they would get another 500, and 500 plus the 1,500 would be 2,000. If you add all of those up over the four years, they would have added that 5,000, but it's not, it's not a $5,000 increase.
Well, would be at the end?
No, their salary would be 2,000 more. They would just have saved the 5,000 overall. I know that's a little tricky, and there, and I might have had a slide, but I could have done that, I don't think of that.
Well, I need some help on that, because I, I, I questioned that right there, even in Raleigh, when I was down there a few weeks ago, and I understood it, that it would be 500, 500, just like you said, 1,000, but when it got to the end of the fourth year, the person would end up at 5,000.
They will have received 5,000 over the four years, but it wouldn't be a 5,000 increase in that last year.
No, it won't be 5,000 in the last year, it would be 5,000 in total of four years.
That's right, they will have made 5,000 in the total.
But see, the way, the way I understood you saying, I don't know wrong or right, I understood it, then it wouldn't going to be 2,000, the way I understood it, $500 a year, but it would, okay. And will, will that, what you were coming up with, will that come before the board? The board, any recommendations is, and fill us in on what's taking place?
We will continue to do it, we've done tonight, and I'll figure on what the process is and where we are.
Ms. Walker, I have a question. You said that if you send out questionnaires as to whether our teachers are interested or not, and you end up, the top 25 decline, and we end up with not the top 25% of the teachers, we could end up in a contract pulling somewhere, if you'll call it, we could end up with a four-year contract with a teacher that we probably is not as good as what we would want, right? Did I follow that correctly?
It could be that you're offering it to not what you would consider your top 25.
And then we would be in a contract.
I wouldn't say it's somebody that you would say is not good, because these are all the only people on the board are proficient. But, you know, like, you know, you can see where we have proficient, accomplished, distinguished, you know, all, you know, you would like it to be that, that top group that's getting it, but you don't know who's going to accept or decline from the initial contract.
The first year is different than that contract. And I have to remember they won't contract.
Yes, and I'm with you.
Years are separate.
We're calling, yes, the questionnaire, we're, this is what I would consider the questionnaire, because this is a contract consideration form, this is not a contract that they would act, that they would receive.
It's just asking you if they.
If they were being interested. And when, you know, when we met with the teacher advisory, one of the things that they had asked was, you know, what if everybody declines it? If everybody declines it, will you still offer it to 25%? Yes, we will, because Dr. Bowles is required by law to offer it, you know, to bring it to you, you're required to, for 25% to be recommended, so if less than 25% is still interested, I mean, we would offer it still to people who had said they were not interested, because we're going to offer the 25, you know, pack the law, listen what happens.
So even if we offer it to them, and say, if 25% declined, we don't have it?
We don't reoffer it. We don't have, we don't have like a backup list, but then it gets that. We don't have, we don't have like a backup list that then gets that, gets a one time to the 25% and then what happens, happens. That's right. We only have, 25% do not have to accept, just 25% have to be offered to.
What if a person eligible for retiring and they think that they're going to be getting that 25% and they decide they just soon to stay here another four years and get that injury just for college? And then, they're, they're getting that, then that's going to just make their retirement more run down the road.
Yeah, they certainly, if they didn't want to retire and instead stay on, that would be fine. They would be able to do that.
Well, is that the hour that instead of offering it to somebody that's coming on up, instead of somebody that's eligible for, eligible to retire and then they think that they might get a $5,000 raise, just pay on it?
Well, I think there's been a lot of discussion among teachers and among other groups on exactly what we just said, but we have to make the decision on who we offer it, based on performance and evaluation, not on what we think they'll do financially or what we think, you know, about their retirement.
How should I say it in law?
Yes.
I must say, I applaud you on doing your job, but I just must express my discontent with the sentiment, you know, both of you. We have great teachers and I think in Cleveland County Schools, we have more than 25% of the teachers we deserve in such a way. I know it's hard for you to do this, but I do applaud you for doing your job, but I'm not happy. And I, I think the rest of the board feels the same way, but definitely not happy because this is very tough.
I'd like to agree with the chairman that it's sad that the law was passed. I think it's very core of law. I think it says a lot about our legislation with it only wanting to reward 25% of our teachers. When we have got a law, very outstanding teachers to go through the process of trying to pick the 25 top teachers, percent of the teachers, is going to have some bad effects of teachers working together, cooperating, doing the kind of things that we've been pushing for years to get teachers to do, come together and work together and not worry about who gets the credit, just do things for the benefit of the kids. And I think this is actually moving us in the other direction. So I think that's a very bad law, but I think you've done an excellent job of working on this, this, coming up with some ways to actually, how do you coordinate this large pool of teachers who are qualified for this and to just 25%? Now, I do think it's a very good move to look at it from school to school rather than district-wide because I know as a principal, I might have graded a little harder maybe than Mr. Harris or maybe Mr. Harris as principal graded a little harder than me. So having, looking, if you put us all schools together, then those schools that have principals that grade the teachers a little harder than the others, those teachers would be at a disadvantage. So I think it would be very good, and that's one of you also, if we look at giving some extra points for the activities, that in schools, high schools have an entirely different structure than the elementary schools. So I think it would be very beneficial to go ahead and look at it from school to school rather than look at it as a whole district. But this looks very good. There's a lot of work that's going into it. I don't have any need for that. And it's going to be a difficult decision and nobody's going to be happy with this. Our teachers aren't going to be happy with it. Certainly, I don't think the board's going to be very happy with it, having to do this. And I know it's, the principal's about to be very happy with having to do it, but they didn't ask our opinion when they passed the law.
Do you have any history or information on what they're doing in Guilford County? Just some information that they've challenged in this Guilford law. Do you know anything about it?
Just that the board has said that they are not going to identify 25%, even though the law requires what they do.
There is a seminar at the wedding Thursday and Friday. I think the last man has signed up and they are getting there. Once they talk about that, a motion, which I think refers to something.
And I believe they're tomorrow's when they're, they.
I mean, that will be after they do that, but.
They've done a preliminary, but.
I think it would give us an opportunity to see what they've done.
And I think in talking to our teachers, I think they feel very similar to how you feel, which is they don't like it, but they understand that y'all have to do what the law requires and they're not mad at you for doing what you're asked to do and they understand that it's just a position for you.
I've been going around the southern schools and I had their teachers to tell me something. If they did not share their information with anyone, if they had a good point because they pray they might get kicked out of the 25%. And that's not, just like what we were talking, you were talking about, that they're not going to share their information now until this decision is made because they might nail this teacher right here that fall and then they don't get the 25%. So, and I did have two teachers to tell me that was right.
Also heard that while the law says that they will receive $500, it's only guaranteed in state budget for this coming year. I mean, it would bother me greatly if, and there will be some of our teachers that will regret this and then if they really don't get all the money that they've been promised and they're, they have given up their tenure before they had to. And so, I'm assuming that they're explaining that to them also, that we, that we will be explaining that to them before they agree to even be considered because I, there is no promise that they're going to get that. Legislature could come back and say, sorry, we're not going to do it.
And in the sample contract.
You give up your first, that you're going to get that.
That's right. Yeah, giving up and you've got, you've got the $500, but you may not get the rest of it.
And in the sample contract, it says that. I agree with you. I think we need to make sure that they're clear on that. I don't think that always the contract is clear to them in a reading, but it does say that if that $500 is based, you know, is probably the general thing they're allocating it.
So I agree, it's a horrible piece of legislation, but you can give this back in the year and I think you've done the best you can, but we had it carried out. I don't, I don't subscribe to what Gilford County doing, that's just a few, a few rights or awful things, some lies to you. You don't like the law, the law's still flawed, we got to date. But I think you've done the best you could and at certain chances, I'm very pleased that you had a teacher involved in developing the plan. They don't like it, they need to see the table and develop the plan, I'm glad you did that.
Chairman Walker, it's time to, I want to compliment Ms. Walker. She came into the game very late in game on this and she has got up to speed very quickly and very engaged with this. And I appreciate that she's spent a lot of time, she's worked late, but she's done a good job to keep up to speed and really honoring teachers and understanding the teachers that they come from. I had a tremendous number of conversations with teachers. You all, we've been, I went around and spoke to teachers about this before school started and shared my concerns. And it is troubling to me, this has been troubling to me. Without too emotional about it, but I'll tell you that one of the reasons that I'm retiring is that June 30th date is because I think it is one of the most troubling things I've seen happen to teachers and breaks my heart, I have to say that and I'll stop there. But as we've talked to teachers, I do think we've done a lot of input with teachers. We've tried to hear what they have to say. I've had meetings with leadership, our local educators association, and they are very supportive of our school business, they're very engaged. I have good conversations with them from time to time and they give good input. They would like to come to talk to this board about some things, possibly their resolution at a future meeting and I'll be trying to facilitate that for you. I will respond to your question about Guilford County. I've tried to follow that. It's interesting, Guilford County is, I think, the only school system in the state that has a licensed attorney as their superintendent and that Dr. Green there is trying to leave that. I agree. I don't think we can, it can choose the laws we abide by, but ultimately, this falls to 100, falls to 114 of my colleagues and I across the state to make this recommendation. We're trying to take it seriously, give it as much time as we can. I want to hear from you all tonight. I've had individual conversations with you, I know your business about this, many of you have been involved, talking to legislators and others about this and I appreciate that you've talked to teachers. But we'll move forward, we're going to do it the best we can do, the best we can do. I'm pleased that we're going to be able to hopefully do a process where teachers can declare they're interested in this because I think that'll help. But when the day is done, we're going to bring your recommendation of 25%. And there are a lot of teachers that are talking about declining and I certainly understand that and I will work with them in ways that we need to. But I do want to say to you, I guess, put your name right now, that we're probably going to be dragging our lead and bringing this recommendation as late as we can. And that's after talking with, and I've talked to our attorneys, other attorneys I've talked at length to the general counsel for NCAE and other organizations, other superintendents. And there's a general feeling that there may be some changes in this in legislation. There's some hope there, whether it will be or not, we all know, but we'll give that area opportunity to at least clarify, is the money going to be there? He said, if there's, you know, I would hate for us to offer it to the teacher and then something changed and once they've given up their tenure and relinquished that voluntarily, that state would come back and restore that and there would be some problems there. Just understand, as late as we can, today, we're going to bring that list to you. It's not, not an attempt to hide anything at all or give you the information we can if it passes again. You know, those of you who've been on board for a while, that we bring that list, we bring your list to you. We've always brought it to you a month or two earlier because I think that's important information to have time to study and digest. But this one is troubling and I just want you to know kind of heard what I'm thinking. I would welcome feedback from you on this process. Ms. Walker has been kind of the leader on this and sheverly of course, but she and I talk just about daily, two or three times some days about this. And every time we talk about it with other superintendents and attorneys and other, another question comes up that we really haven't thought of. And I guess part of the challenge is that this is a one-time deal. This will never happen again, we don't think, because if tenure is eliminated, then there will be no need for this in the future. So we're putting a lot of time, a lot of energy, we're taking it seriously, but understanding that there's no pressure, we don't have any experience to fall back on, that we've done this before and we don't expect it to do again. And so, it's a challenge, but I would welcome you the opportunity if you have suggestions, sort of share those with me, share with Ms. Walker. We want to hear from you. We're not asking you to approve a plan because that's not the way the legislation is written. It says the superintendent make a recommendation and the user board will decide what you're going to do that recommendation. So that's, that's what it projects to me.
One more I appreciate you coming personally to clarify is I do have a couple of questions. Do you have the next steps updated for work session in March, I believe sometime? Do you anticipate telling us much different than you have today?
Other than by then, we should have the contract consideration forms back and tell us a little kind of how teachers are seeing if they're interested in the contract, if they're not, that would give us a little bit of data about that.
And two, would likely when you contract itself for your consideration before we offer, because it's a little bit different language, I think you need to, you need to let us that contract sell so we can sometimes touch with that mark and let you have that contract.
I have a question further about the teacher who decides not to accept a four-year, but she, he or she wants to continue teaching and they qualify of course. They're offered, all of them offer a one-year contract, right? Each year until 2018.
The group that's in the eligible group, most of those people already have tenure and they would continue just to be under career status until 2018 when everyone loses it. So not accepting if they retain their tenure, but only until 2018 when everyone loses it. So they can choose to voluntarily give it up now for the pay increase or they can hold on to it and then lose it in 2018.
So there's one-year contracts with it?
Would be for people.
Not tenure.
That's right, or not-tener people. Or people that were tenured in another district and have evidence or they don't have to have a continuing.
Any other questions? I think we all share. Thanks. Thanks. Cheers. Sure, Richard, if you're winning it too. So thank you.
One more, Chairman, our seniors and everyone else, for a couple of hours and we didn't have, I think, earlier that you had an objection or like you did to excuse him, so then it's going.
That's fine. Thank you all.
Chairman, we did receive a lot of our students, your return, and they have notified us their intention to increase their fees, certain of their fees. This is not a, providing you with that information, this is not an increase in their retainer, which has been, at least in the seven years I've been to the beginning, I believe it's been $300, which really may correct them that, but I believe it's been $300 for one for the retainer, which is for all, on call, status items and for attendance and defensive request by the chair and board. That has not changed, but there is a slight increase in their partner and associate paralegal fees. We've identified that those would have a scheduled increase of $5 for the next two years, starting with fiscal calendar. And so, that would be for us in July, once the new year starts. That is a change in your contract. I provided you with a copy of that information if you have it, showing you each of the years and each of the partners, associates, paralegals about that fee. And so, as per their request, I'm presenting that to you tonight for your consideration.
Just a few questions. Have we thought about Jake and Tegon closing? This is not the one, I don't think we have, this is not the one. They are asking for us to amend their contract against the fourth. And so, does decide whether to do that or to seek options. As you all know, I'm as old as Methuselah. Back in 89, we had the local attorney on the old, the old sheriff's system. And we pretty soon found out that with no due disrespect to any local attorneys, but they just don't have the knowledge of school law, that attorneys in Asheville, for example, Campbell and Shately have it, there's a Smith and Schwartz, I believe, do the same thing. Plus, they also, not in Asheville, but our attorneys, Barrington and Smith, have experts in all areas, individual experts in separate areas of school law. And in addition to that, then we always have the option, if we have a local matter to come up, for example, land sale or something like that, and we have done that in the past to use local attorneys. And that's really what we use and I'm happy to say that I do ask and we have, since Dr. Boles has been here and I don't, circuit two is on, only in a sense, but I will, it dropped about 50% in our attorney's fees. So, and I myself, I, it's fine, I'm assuming I use local attorneys where I need. When I was in medical practice, I didn't find. When I was in medical practice, I didn't find anybody here locally who was attuned to medical law. So I had to go elsewhere. So I think this would be the way to do it, if you need this contract. I invite other opinions, like anybody saying?
Dr. Hammer, I'm excited with you. I know back in the days when we had your old school halls, we listed all the legal opinions about all the questions, the school principal would add, and the book was about about 6 inches long and they, I think it was one of those actually had, was a big, big volume before we put it all on the field. But as you read through that, Barrington Smith's name keeps appearing over and over and over and they have been involved in the school hall, making the halls with the judges' decisions, being with the field, with the judges, they've been, they are one of the premier, not the premier, school law firm in the state of North Carolina. And I think certainly we need to have that party of team representing us in these school matters. It's expensive, but it's certainly a lot more expensive to get in legal trouble because we didn't get good legal advice from attorneys. So I certainly think we need to look at keeping the best representation we can have with and hire.
I don't, mine, I worry with Dr. Hammer and Mr. Hall, because as I'm sitting here thinking, just a normal person, I would, I needed a wheel out here, somebody that's an expert in riding wheels, but if I was named criminal vice, I'd go to a criminal attorney. These are school-based attorneys and I think that's wrong.
I think so, and they used to be attorneys for North County School Association, I assume they still are, and that's who they selected and it's been a while since I read the statistic for once in a while, they represented over half the school districts in North Carolina. They're generally considered the experts on education law across the state, like county used to, or Houston used to.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Bland's question, I think is very valid and I follow that extensively. You know, and I'm big on level, we can use, but in researching, as Mr. Hall's already pointed out, this law firm is very, very ready. I think it doesn't get any better. And I think this falls, hit the nail on the head. I mean, we have to look at what's going on and what we're going to be facing and we have to have the best and I think they've proven themselves to be the best. And I do think we have some very reputable law firms here, Cleveland Council of Best, when it comes to this, I think we are getting the experts, I must say.
I don't think I can add anything else to what y'all said, because they are, as long as I've been on board, the name Barrington Smith has always meant excellence in school law. And I think, like we keep saying, when we have local matters, that whether it's real estate or something like that, we have these local attorneys and I think it's like we should. But we don't have a lot more locally that specializes in school law.
Well, I wasn't saying, but I was convinced, we might need the best.
We do.
Definitely need the best and I think that was the fact, I think I used to have been all day, I'm very pleased with their professional, how professional they are and the information that they use.
Can you see it? What's the pleasure, Paul?
I'll make a note, before the contract changes, Mr. President.
Second.
We've moved and seconded to approve the contract changes that were requested by the firm Barrington Smith, amending their contract. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Yes, as you announced, thank you. On to the less involved situation, I believe, is Greg, is Cheryl still present?
I am.
I believe you're supposed to talk to us about the second reading of the new hospital. I apologize if I was going to.
And I apologize that Dr. Humbley is not here, he's our service animal expert, but he had a uncle that passed away in Pennsylvania and so he is making the mother there to her over the weekend and he may be there for an extended period of time, but whether, he may not be back for the next time. But he worked, as a matter of fact, if you talk about our attorneys, he worked with our attorneys over the weekend even to finish this document up. You know we brought it to you last time out of short notice, because we do have this request and so there are a few changes too that we highlighted in the red line notes for you and you have that updated copy and I'll highlight those. But the really only change to the policy itself, you'll find it on the very first page in parentheses at the end of section two, the attorneys tell us that we do need to include on a limit, as a limited circumstances, miniature horses as service animals, that is a growing trend and circumstances where we could have that and so, and pay your attorneys to give you that advice, they have researched this extensively for us and believe we need to put that in there.
What's the definition?
You got to ask, I'll build it up.
I was going to ask you about that, because I mean, that's a lot that I've associated with, I wonder if we did.
I'm certain it's a special animal in that regard and I've seen miniature horses that look about the size of a dollar, but that's about as.
Some are small.
Yeah, but it does, it does say limited circumstances and so, but the, when you go to 4305 R1, you'll see just a few changes on the first section there, whenever possible, request for the use of service animals, must be made at least 10 days in advance and service animals will not, will not be permitted to accompany students or employees in school without prior approval. So that's just another caveat to ensure that we got the appropriate approval and you see all that, some changes there, changing, just making clear that on gene, that it's the animal's handler that's responsible, that may or may not be the student itself, because there could be cases where the animal is in an exception to a situation, is not really under control of the student, but is under control of the animal. Most of those, I understand, would be cases where it's an animal that works and we do have some of those where the animal will work because of a seizure or disorder or a, maybe diabetes or those kind of things and that may be a student who would not carry the handle themselves. Under the health and safety, the attorneys have said we need to strike that whole section. They've gone back and really researched this again from an ADA standpoint and believe that that's not necessary, that part of it. And then the 4305 R2, that has changed slightly to the very last point, documentation, not for the need of the animal, but that the animal is trained on the task for which it's being used, that is a change there. And then the 4305 R3, no changes for that. I'll be glad to try and see any other questions except for the miniature horse question. Any man?
Dr. Wallston, we currently just have one student law.
We have a pending request, Eric, that they know it's a request and we're in the future, that will get, that will be notified of that, we're anticipating one additional request and that we've had a conversation with the parents about it, so we expect that to come. And the parents are, they're trying to decide, there's surveys, they feel like they can manage this in the school setting and so they could, very good to say, I think my child about it, they handle this. But we know we have one request and we anticipate the second.
I know there's some area of law that's really, there's a lot of changes now with many people trying to get service animals on airplanes and various at schools or whatever. Real question is what kind, what kind of animals do you allow and what kind of circumstances? And I think our attorneys have done a really good job of coming up with a plan that addresses those needs and it is actually a real need of the child and I'll just, I'll, I paid to be a student with me. And I think they've done, done a good job of, did re-achieve that.
These are very, very well timed, very specifically trained animals compared to children. I have a chance to throw a bone back to them, very impressed with the way the animal operated and the way the student operated with it, not in our district, not super in other places. It's an impressive thing to watch. Now, they're expensive, I understand that, so, what are they?
Any more questions, comments? If not, what's the pleasure, Paul?
I have a question with President, uh, Service Animal.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the new policy regarding service animals. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Yes, as you announced, thank you. On to student transfer requests, which you have in front of you. What's the pleasure, Paul?
I'll make the motion to approve the student transfer request as recommended by the superintendent.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve student transfer request as recommended by the superintendent. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Yes, as you announced, thank you. On to announcements, Paul.
Thank you, Chairman. As promised last month, we have given you a complete list of upcoming events and activities. I won't go through all those, but I hope you'll notice, we've got quite a few, March with the annual days, our robotics, our math, those kinds of things, we've got, I don't know if it's coming up. I do hope you have our teaching excellence awards program available to aid on your calendar and our senior scholars banquet on May 1st. And then as you can see, we have finally established the dates for graduations this year, conversations with those principals. A little different this year, we'll have on June 6th, on Friday night, Shelby High School will have their graduation, they're planning on having that at the baseball stadium, which would be a nice place to have it. And then on Saturday at 7, we'll begin at 9:00 AM with Kingsmount graduation on their campus, football stadium there, and then the press at Burns graduations at 12:00, press at 12:00 PM and Burns at 4:00 PM at Garden Way. So those are established now. I hope you'll make plans to be with us on any and all of those events that you can attend, if you're looking at those, that is what they have on.
I have one announcement. We have a call meeting for tomorrow night. Now, whether it will be, and that decision will be made, we all are anxious to get on superintendent's search, however, we don't want to do it expensive, anybody's sake, particularly those who have become the distance officers. So I'll keep you posted, stay tuned for your cell phone and any, any make it on. I think that the decision made, that's in, in 10:00.
You talked to them?
Yes.
But that's your wife? And they're going away until tomorrow?
Actually, that was their suggestion. I was pushing cancellation, checking to try to get that plane fee, but it's their suggestion. So I think that they are well equipped to travel on the road. I'm not sure I would be at, at any rate, that's current staffs, we want to get moving now, if there's anybody who would move themselves. So Dr. Boils, you have some good news?
We will, we will post that on the website as we all make decisions about that, also on, from the building, if anything, if it changes like that, so if there's, if there's emergency changes there. I do have one matter of good news and this is something you all already know, but I think it's good news, I reported this week, from this last week, from the man's head, that was a good process. Our hoppers with her mother, who's in the hospital tonight and she's not here, I would brag on her, but she were here or not, she did a great job leading that, our staff did a great job being engaged in that, talked to, as you referred, the committee that visited from across, really across the eastern United States, did 2300, 400 contacts with teachers and community members and some contacts with youth and poor members and they heard a lot of really positive things about our district, they heard some things that we can work on and they'll certainly share that information back with us. But I was particularly pleased that they have not made a decision yet, contrary to what people are saying, they have not decided that we will get this accreditation, and I didn't say that to you, they have decided that they will recommend that the, if they had said permission, give us accreditation, so that will be forthcoming. But many times, school districts get many, medium accreditations in those required actions that they shared and I think the required actions they shared with us were ones that we already were expecting, we knew the things that we needed to work on, there are things that we've been working on, but I was very pleased at that business and the outcome of that business. And so that accreditation is a stamp of approval for our graduates. It is not for the board, it's not for the staff, it's not for the teachers, although it affirms the work they do. It really helps us in that our graduates leave here and it's, helps them, they help say that they came from an accredited school, a creative school district. So pleased with that and that's a good thing for our students. So thank you for your participation in that and for your involvement financially.
Are there good news?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good.
Absolutely. Part of it.
No, but this is for good news?
Yeah, this is good news.
That's what's on the agenda?
Okay.
My first thing, I'd like to tell Mr. Garber that I would like to thank Crest Middle School, I was over there, right? And Miss Goldie was over there with her staff. It's absolutely marvelous how they do their housekeeping up there. It was so good, that it's sure going to make it easier on Mr. Garber, it's something time doing his banking work or any other time, and they did such a good job. It, for a school to be the age it was, when I walked in, it looked like I walked in a brand-new building, right? It was that nice. And I've seen some TAs, it's a marvelous what these TAs, and if I can help them in Raleigh, for us to put TAs in these classrooms, it's needed all day long, everywhere, I'm going to be fighting for that, because they are a very crucial piece of work in classrooms that I went to, that I've seen and I went and watched the program and that TA handled some of them, all his children that were in this classroom, if they wouldn't have gotten that play if it hadn't been for that TA, if it was that, if that did, if they had handled those children that way. I'm going to keep working in these schools and I'll, I'll, I'll congratulate anyone that I see that's doing a great job and that was absolutely the most impressive thing I think Crest Middle School has done so far.
Any motion to adjourn? Move the adjournments, Chair?
Second.
Then move your motion to this section, all in favor, say aye.